Jim Benage. Jeff Elsop.
Here.
Jeff Hawes.
Here.
Betty Martin.
Here.
Justin Smith.
Here.
We have a forum mayor.
Appreciate it, thank you. And with all of our regularly scheduled meetings, we'll open with a moment of silent prayer. If you'll bow your heads and join me in that. Now please rise and join in the same as the Fledges of Allegiance and the American Flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, welcome everybody in the audience this evening and everybody watching at home to your regularly scheduled meeting of your Bel Air City Council. I told these individuals up here that I'll try to keep this under five and a half hours tonight. Due to that, we actually have a pretty short agenda, actually. We will ask for a brief executive session towards the end of the meeting. But on tonight's agenda, we're going to revisit a tax credit letter of support. We're going to look at a recognition agreement and also a development agreement. That's pretty much, will make up our agenda for this evening. First thing to come before council this evening is the consent agenda, which consists of the minutes of the August 21st of the council meeting.
Mr. Mayor. I move to approve the consent agenda as listed and authorize the mayor to sign.
I'll second.
First and second, questions or comments? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Okay, next is our appropriations ordinance. In the total, $510,526.86. This is a little bit higher than what we normally used to seeing up here. And that's due to the debt service at the CCUA and also a final payment on 53rd Street of $110,000. So, we're excited that we were able to do that. And 53rd Street's looking a lot nicer now. But that's the appropriations ordinance before us this evening.
Mr. Mayor, I motion that we approve appropriations ordinance 18-17.
I'll second.
First and second, questions or comments? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Next, I don't have a formal city requested appearance. So we'll move on to citizens' concerns. I do have a card from Sylvia Forte from North Harding. Post the...
I'm Sylvia Forte.
Forte, yes.
I live at 472 North Harding. First time I heard of Bel Air was 32 years ago in a small Mississippi Delta city. I informed our family physician that we were moving to Wichita where my husband accepted a job. He told us we were not and wrote a prescription that read "Bel Air." He explained his son was completing a residency at Wesley and looked at the crimes coming into the emergency room. There were very few violent crimes from Bel Air. So he leased a home in Bel Air for his young family. Bel Air is recognized as a safe community where people move to raise their families and to enjoy a marked quality of life. That is Bel Air's forte. Just today, some seniors, our fellow seniors at the YMCA applauded Bel Air's decision on rezoning. They compared this to the dismal prospect of tiny homes crammed next to million-dollar mansions in another city. I didn't tell them about the closeness of the council vote, but they were most impressed that Bel Air was looking out for its citizens. In order to attract new residents, Bel Air must avoid the stigma of inappropriate development. We are still trying to sell high-dollar residential areas. Uncertainty is a thing that causes prices to drop and development to stop. Bel Air is primarily a bedroom community for people wanting to sleep secure at night. Bel Air citizens want to know that their major investments, their homes will be protected. My family and our neighbors bought their homes for a quality of life. Our sons chose the neighborhood they wanted to grow up in. We take pride in Aurora Park and in Bel Air. We do not wish to change this character in both the city and our subdivision. We believe that anytime there is new development in an established neighborhood, there should be stipulations to make sure that it conforms. Bel Air really needs to underscore its reputation for enhanced lifestyles when it comes to marketing. Thank you.
Does anyone else question to address council this evening? If not, we will move on to reports. We'll begin with the council member.
No report, Mr. Mayor.
No report, although I did get to just regress a little bit. I did get to visit with the Homestead property development down in Mulvane today. So, I'll talk about that when we talk about that on the motion agenda. Thank you.
Martin.
About the only thing I have is I'd like for all of us to wish Mr. Rusher happy birthday. Today's his birthday and we can't forget his birthday.
Happy birthday.
Happy birthday.
Happy birthday.
That's all I have, Mayor.
Mr. Mayor, I have no report this evening.
Councilor Elsop.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, just a brief report. I just wanted to report on the Chisholm Creek Utility Authority meeting that we had on August 23rd. I guess the main item that came out of that was we approved to get the ball moving on option one of two options to go forward with the proposal to... That we had a technical advisory committee report on upgrades to the water and sewer treatment plant. And this was the first step in a series of steps to look at protecting our water and water supply and the needs of our sewer in the future. I mentioned the last council meeting that we have a risk to the system based on an estimate that in the next five years or so, the treatment plant will be reaching its maximum design for term and capacity. And like I said, we're taking the first step in a series of steps to get to where we need to be. But what that will eventually mean for Bel Air is we're going to have to look at ways of funding future increased costs that are coming our way. One way or another, they're coming. And we need to do what we can to protect for that and to plan on that as best we can. So, that's all I have in my report, Mr. Mayor.
Appreciate that. I have no formal report, except for I apologize that I did not realize it was our city manager's birthday. Happy birthday. I'll join Mr. Martin and the rest of the council, wish you a happy birthday. Appreciate the update. Councilor Elsop of CCUA, I was trying to pull up the actual agenda, but for some reason Dropbox isn't working here with our CCUA back. But that is something that certainly we're going to have to be looking at. What I really appreciate, oh, that was that both cities, Mayor and Man from Park City and I, we both were able to share our thoughts. And it was pretty much the same page, the same thought that if we're going to do it, let's do it right. That'd be the most economical. Not anything that any of us really is, we want to do, but it's something we have to do and we'll need to do. But that's, and I'm glad that we're able to forecast ahead, look at the future of that. That will open up to a city attorney.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just wanted to let everyone know that Planning Commission is working on the home-based business code revised, revisement that council directed. Last month, Planning Commission held a public hearing and no one participated in that public hearing, but Planning Commission is required to solicit feedback from the public on that. And they do that by having that hearing. The topic will come back up at their September 13th meeting and they invite comments to come at that time as well. Also, our code enforcement officer sent out courtesy notices to certain properties regarding street trees hanging over the street surface. You can't, your street tree can't be closer than 12 feet to the roadway. And that courtesy notice is the preliminary or first part of the process that could lead to an abatement, which would be where the city would come in, cut, trim the tree, and then the homeowner would be assessed the cost for that. The code enforcement officer here does a great job of working with homeowners, advise them of the safety concerns. He was mentioning that in the summer, trees are growing. Our code requires that those trees be set back. And as winter approaches, branches break. There are other risks that are associated with, you know, wind and the second part of the tornado season. That, we sent out quite a few of those letters as a courtesy. And again, it's part of an enforcement process that the city has. And that's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
City Manager.
Just a couple items, Mayor. Just a reminder, the brush site is open this Saturday from 9:00 to 1:00. Now, I want citizens to know that we're supposed to get rain all week. There is gravel out there. But if we continue to get rain like we had today, we may actually have to close or not open and postpone it. So, the best way to watch that is through social media. So hopefully you're following us on Facebook or Twitter or something like that or checking on our website because we'll post that. And then, of course, we'll put a sign out there and such. But in most situations, the gravel and stuff is okay, but the rain we've been having last two days, it's supposed to rain through Thursday, I believe. So it may get to the point where it's just too muddy to open. And if that's the case, like I said, we may move it to the next Saturday. And again, just keep us, keep following us and we'll let everybody know the condition of the brush site. Last thing is the Bel Air Chamber meets tomorrow at noon at the Best Western Park City. And the speaker is a Small Business Administration. So, any business owners out there that like to learn a little bit about programs offered by the Small Business Administration, would encourage them to attend the Chamber meeting tomorrow. So, thank you.
Appreciate it. So, the brush site will be on social media. Is there still mulch up over there?
I believe there is.
Is that, are they actually taking scoops and putting it in the back of pickup trucks? Or do you have...
We, they can do that. And then, we also have some bags out there. So if people don't have a truck, they can put it in a bag and then put it in their car.
Seeing all the advertisements again for mulch being on sale. I thought the city has a free mulch available. Appreciate that. Before I move into ordinance resolution and final actions, I did just want to share a thought, shared up here with the governing body just before the meeting opening. You mentioned the brush site. It reminded me, I was just, on three different instances in the last month, I've been really, really proud of our employees. And I want the public to know, and I want to say publicly here from the bench, how proud we should be of all of our employees who, you know, many of them are doing more than one job. And the smile that they have. The brush site, I was out there last, last month. And the young man who was opening it, opened it up almost 10 minutes early because he saw there were three trucks there and was helping everybody out just on a Saturday morning. I thought that was, you know, he could have waited until nine o'clock and perfectly been within his rights to do it and kept it open until closing time. That same week, on Sunday, I had a gentleman stop me after church. And he works on piping and oversees a lot of, you know, just drilling across the entire state, even in Oklahoma and Nebraska. And he said, "Are you still mayor of Bel Air?" I said, "Yeah, I am." He said, "Man, I wish every municipality had employees that were as easy to work with as Ann and Keith are." That spoke volumes to me. He said they were by far the easiest to work with as far as getting back with them right away with answers. All the answers were fair. And he said, he wished that other municipalities could see the way that our, that Keith and Ann worked and that. And then, we joked earlier about how we had a marathon meeting the last time we met, August 21st. And we're here till, what, 12:45? It was, you know, 1:00 in the morning before a lot of us left this building. And I happened to come in here the next morning at 8:30. And all of us that were dreary-eyed here the night before, you guys were there with smiles on already serving the public. And you weren't just showing up, you weren't just sitting at the desk. You guys were working and that. You know, when I'm, you know, looking at Tristan, Ted, Stacy, and Ty and Jackie, you guys were all there. And I just, I was really impressed with all that. So I wanted to just say thank you to all of our employees. We just celebrated Labor Day, so I kind of thought maybe that might be appropriate to do at this time. With that, I'm going to move on into ordinances, resolutions, and final actions. The first thing to come before council this evening is application, or actually, to support a tax credit application to be filled with the Kansas Housing Resources Cooperation for the development of an affordable senior housing community by Homestead Affordable Housing. Last, at our last meeting, we heard a presentation on this. And council asked that we would table the matter until today's meeting. So hopefully you guys had time to do a little bit more research and do some more deep diving as far as thought process and all of that. I'm always glad when we can table a decision. If we need more time, we certainly don't want to rush into anything. But this is for a housing, senior housing. A, actually, private landowner is in agreement to sell the lot. And then, the person group wanting to buy that lot is wanting to put in affordable senior housing. There's certainly a lot of, lot of pros and cons to this as I go down, many of which were stated at the last meeting. So, I drove by 53rd and Oliver just earlier before the meeting even too, just to kind of take a look at that again. But with that, you know, Tom Bishop, who gave us the presentation last time, he's here to answer any questions that we might have. So, before we move into that, I just wanted to see what questions council had and then we kind of see what you guys thought if you wanted to support this or not.
Mr. Mayor, I have some questions. Mr. Bishop, thank you for being, coming back. One of the questions I had was just, as far as the construction of the entire complex, would the, would the construction of all the buildings be completed before the first tenants or residents would move in? Or can you walk us through maybe how the phase of the building or the construction of all the buildings works?
Yes, I'd be glad to do that. Mr. Mayor, members of the council, happy birthday, Mr. Manager. I have along the contractor that's building in Derby and we're facing that situation now. I would respond by, can I? I won't take you through all of this, but there are a couple of things that I think would be helpful. Go backwards. What we, what we typically do, and we did with the city of Derby, is negotiate with them to pull a building permit for each building and to work with, with the fire department and the building inspectors to make sure that we could get a certificate of occupancy on a building when it was done on one end of the development where we still be, may be building on another. And, and if I, if I could have either Tony or Larry maybe give a response to how that's working right now in Derby.
Hi, I'm Tony Pugh though with Excel Construction. And I live, our office is on Woodlawn here in Bel Air. Anyway, what we do is we build, each building being separately permitted, it can be separately occupied. The only thing that we have to worry about is some of the common areas and especially fire truck access and that kind of thing. Make sure we have the fire hydrants in, the basic roads in, the walks, that kind of thing.
All the lighting and things like that.
It's no different really than a housing development of any kind, that you have people move into a house before the balance of the houses are built. Does that answer your question?
Yes, it does. And then, just to follow up, what about the common buildings? Do you typically build those first or what, at what point are those built?
We try to build them as quickly as we can, yeah. Right now, the way the project's developing in Derby, we have about three of the four pluses about ready to occupy within, I don't know, 15 days or something. And the common area building is almost done.
I have another follow-up. What is your estimate to get to completion of the entire complex?
A little over a year.
A little over a year, okay.
So, the, the community building that he's referencing has the community mailboxes in it. So, each of the tenants come to the community building every day. They come over, have coffee, get their mail. It's one of the ways that we know everybody's okay. It's, it's not that the mail gets delivered out somewhere else. It's one of our being able to be in touch with folks. So, the community building will be open with the mailboxes. The furniture is being delivered the first week in October. So, the office will be there and the exercise room, computers, things like that. So they'll have access to those things from the beginning.
Does anyone else have a question? I've got another question.
Go ahead.
So, one of the, one of the characteristics of living in Bel Air is that we do have sewer and water prices that are relatively, relatively high. Has that gone into your calculation for the cost of living in your facility? Given that your facility is specifically targeting low-income seniors? Is that, I just, I'd hate for that to kind of come to a surprise or not be factored into what you're estimating your residents would be able to afford?
We've, we've not gotten into the precise detail of what that will be. What we've been able to do in the other communities that we work with, Derby, Mulvane, Augusta, all came to a decision at their bench to have a senior citizen rate. So that if somebody was a senior living alone, whether it was in an apartment or whether it was in their own home, they had a base rate that was set for seniors. And so, we've, we've taken advantage of that and each of the communities that we've worked in lately have, have done that. But that's something that, that we'll have to work through here.
That's it for me for questions at the moment.
Do they also have any other questions?
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
Each one of these units will have a meter?
Yes, yes, each of these, these have a split system. Larry's the architect, you want to respond to the...
Basically, what we can tell each meter. I think the only thing we don't meter was the, depending on the requirements of the city, was the water, depending on how it goes. Mulvane was a little tough. They, I think they had, we had to buy a lot more meters than we really wanted to buy. But that's the way, whatever the rule is, that's what we'll do. But in some cases, Tom will pick up the water in his, in his pricing of the units. So, some, it just depends on what the city requirements are. They have requirements whether they're individually metered or we meter them per building or how the city wants, wants, you know, whatever their requirements are.
And at Mulvane and Derby, we're covering the water and sewer for all of our tenants there. Part of what happened in Mulvane was there was also a question about the pump station because a new subdivision was going in adjacent when we were going in. And we paid a third of the cost of the pump station and the, the city paid a third and the other developer paid a third to cover a new highfalutin pump station. I don't know, the, the best pump station they could find. The, the other thing, if, if I could, and I, maybe I'm just supposed to respond to questions, but it seemed to me that, and it was late in the evening and you'd gone through a lot, but it was, it was like I was coming here to, to sell you something that, that you weren't sure you needed and why was I here? And my response to that may not have been the best. I'm really compassionate about what I do here. I was director of Menai Housing for 12 years before the 20-year anniversary yesterday that we formed Homestead. And, and I, I live and breathe this stuff. And so, I want you to know that it was probably four months ago, we came here with the plans and specs on Derby, left them with your planning director, left them with Cy, told them that we were interested in finding land because when we've done Derby, when we had 200 folks looking down there, they weren't all from Derby. They were from Salina, they were from Valley Center, they were from all over, including some folks that, I won't, I don't want to quote folks that would be talking about leaving your neighborhood. But, but looking at your community, as we've served the communities, rural communities around here, we came here because you've got a really high elderly population. We went to the data and found that 25, 23%, almost a quarter of your population is 55 and older. And that's the eligibility for us, 55 and older. We also, because you did such a really good job with your master growth plan, we've been through the growth plan. Your growth plan says in your housing characteristics, page four, 90% of the houses in Bel Air have three or, three or more bedrooms. Lots of them are four and five. Only 11% have one or two bedrooms. And 387 renter occupied units were determined in your report. And there's a 0% vacancy. No, no vacancies exist for rental housing in the city in your master plan. And then, cost on the same page, your median rents are $1,072 a month. And that's almost a third of your typical tenant's income. So your housing cost, you don't have housing, rental housing. It also, page six, summary. What does this tell us as citizens of Bel Air? It tells us that you have a high housing demand, owner and rental. Bel Air is underserved with rental units in general, apartments in particular. People pay higher rents in Bel Air than most of the region. Homes retain their value better than most of the other regional communities. And the homes built in the last few years will increase your median home value and my perents, your valuation and your tax base. This is all, this is all from your report. So we get to the master growth plan saying, what is your preferred balanced growth scenario? Page 13. You want there to be 81 acres of multifamily, 2%. You're currently at 11 acres, zero. That's in your plan. Implementation strategy, it tells you to do the things that we've tried to bring as a preliminary plan that we would refine with your city staff. R6 zoning require utility connections, require direct property access to arterial or collector streets. And what we had done is taken the filed Sedgwick County map to do our drawing. And what we had done is taken the filed Sedgwick County map to do our drawing. And I don't know whether you have these or you want people to have them, but, but as it's laid out for commercial right now, those are the cut points and potentially much higher traffic access and numbers than you would have off of senior apartments where they're not going to be coming and going as they would out of business. So, but, but again, as I said last time, as it relates to all of that, you know, we're open to, you know, doing another cut or reducing those, but again, we've tried to follow what was already in the zoning next to the single family that is already approved and ready to go. So, again, and, and I want to apologize for not coming and meeting with each of you just to introduce myself and the organization and what we were thinking of doing before we ever came to, uh, now you have to decide whether you like it or not. So I, I apologize for that. One of your members actually contacted us over the weekend and was able to visit, um, the Mulvane property that's done, and I think you also saw Derby.
Correct.
Under construction. And it was great. And, and I'd offer that invitation, depending on what you do tonight, I'd offer that invitation to all of you. And as I'd said last time, the city, city council at Derby did that. They arranged transport. Everybody went with staff and met with residents and toured units and basically did Jim or Mr. Benage what, what you did today as a group. And, and I'd offer that invitation. So, so with that, I, I wanted to know that, that I felt, I didn't do my work by making sure that you knew all of what, I hoped that you would know that would make a decision that would serve the seniors in your community well. And for that, I apologize.
Well, we certainly appreciate you coming back and certainly appreciate you staying late at our last meeting. Um, you know, this is one of those things where, like I said, there's a number of, uh, pros and cons to be considered here, um, for this, but the action before us tonight, we're not talking about a zone change. We're simply talking, I shouldn't say simply, but looking at, you know, signing the letter of support so that Homestead can move forward. But the letter would, would say, um, correct me if I'm wrong here, be, you know, that's going to go to nonprofit status and the construction's going to be tax exempt. So that's what's before us tonight, you know, just, um, so that's what we need to do is kind of weigh the, the pros and cons here tonight. You know, I would just offer this, that, you know, when I went to 53rd and Oliver just prior to the meeting, I mean, it's a field right now. 53rd and Oliver is not going to be a main thoroughfare and, you know, anytime in the very, in the near future, I wouldn't think. It is a private landowner. Uh, this would bring in additional rooftops, which is something that we've talked about as we're looking to attract other additional retail and commercial. Additional rooftops is something they look at. There's also, there's, there aren't any homes nearby, so we're not worried about home values there. Uh, some of the, the cons are, are pretty strong as well. You know, this is a, another non-taxpaying entity. That is something we need to consider with the, uh, major, uh, growth plan there. You know, we've got to look at all of our traffic. You know, Coke Industries is one of the biggest, largest employers in the entire country for that. So, you know, we, we do need to look at that. We also need to look at the need of, uh, a lot of that that was pointed out this evening. So before us tonight, like I said, is to decide if we want to support, uh, this letter. Support, that's just basically what the motion would be. With that, I want to see if there's anybody else who had any questions or comments?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to just give a little report on what I saw today. Mr. Larry Cryer was very gracious to, uh, show me the, the two facilities, the one in Mulvane, which is completed and has been in operation for some seven years, I think, if that's correct. And, uh, it's about 42 units, so it's a little smaller than, than what your planned development here in Bel Air is. Those are very nice units. They have two-bedroom units and, and one-bedroom units, uh, some with garages, some without. Uh, but one of the things that, that is very obvious is, uh, the residents there are, are active, they're, they're driving, they're, they're, they're mobile. So they, they are out, you know, uh, taking advantage of retail businesses that are nearby. Now, I didn't observe, and correct me if I don't have this right, but I didn't observe a lot of retail close by the Mulvane facility. Uh, with the Derby facility, there is quite a bit very nearby. Uh, so I don't know if, if I just didn't notice it or i- is, is it nearby? Can you, can you tell us about that?
It, it starts on Rock Road about a mile to the south where there's, there's several banks and a Pizza Hut and some other fast food and some, uh, some retail and then a Dylan's Grocery Store just past the, the Route 15 intersection there.
So you had to go down to Rock Road, which, it isn't far. I mean, it's, it's like a mile. It's, it's, it's real close by.
Half a mile further?
Yeah. Half mile? Okay. Very good. Thank you. Uh, and I just didn't remember what that distance was, but the Derby facility, it's right there. There's a target there. There's several retail businesses very close by. They, they incorporated some lessons learned in the Derby facility as they're building 77 units there under construction. Like Mr. Cryer said, that, uh, some of these are close to occupancy. I saw some of those, uh, units and, and they, they do look better. Um, they, they have wider entrances, entrances so that if, so you would need to have a gurney get through there, you could, whereas the, the ones in Mulvane didn't, didn't have that access. It makes it a little harder for the EMS folks. But if you ever had to deal with the EMS trying to get a gurney through, uh, it's, it's always interesting what they can do. I, I had the experience of that one time and I thought, wow, you guys is just, you figured out everything. But, uh, anyway, um, so there's, they're good units. Uh, they, um, they're very well maintained and that was one of the things I wanted to see and I was glad to see, uh, a seven-year-old project that's still being well-maintained and it's not left in disrepair or say, well, we built it seven years ago and that's good enough for the next 10 years. Uh, that, that wasn't the case. It was very obvious they were, they were well-maintained. I think that in this particular case, these rooftops would add to the case for retail development, and that's one thing retailers always look at, what are the rooftops? A one-year, 60-unit is very rapid expansion. You won't get that in any other development in, in Bel Air for, for, for our lifetimes, probably. Okay? That's, that's extremely rapid. Uh, yes, granted, there, there are one, two people living in these units, but, but even still, that's, that's pretty phenomenal. So I think that, you know, uh, in conclusion, I just think we have a really good opportunity here. I get that we're going to lose a tax base there, uh, but I think we'll gain it in the retail development that we can encourage from the additional rooftops. So that's really all I have to say about it. I, I just commend what you guys are doing. I think that's a, you know, as, as several of you know, I'm very passionate about taking care of the, the poor, and these aren't really poor folks, but these are people being helped out in ways that they wouldn't be able to afford these, these units if, if they didn't have something like this because their incomes wouldn't, wouldn't get this nice of a place to live. So, uh, it's, it's a great thing and I think, I, I really encourage us to support it.
Appreciate the comments. Any other questions or comments?
Could I respond to the income relative to poorer people? And, and you saw in our sketch, average incomes of 13 to 17. What the tax credit program allows is for us to serve families from 30% to now 80%. So we'd be looking in this community to have, from those folks that are making 12, 14,000 at the low end to 38, 42,000 at the upper end. So we can't do very many at the upper and we can't do very many at the lower, but the, the balance at, at 60% is going to be, uh, 32, 34,000 at 60% of area median income. So we're not serving people in poverty. Uh, we, we often have some challenges in meeting the targets to find the 30%.
Yeah. And just, just to reflect on that, I don't know how many people actually realize this, but Social Security is going to only pay a person about 16, 17,000 dollars a year, depending on what their lifetime income is like. Okay? So your, your, you know, two people living together have been collecting Social Security or select, collecting Social Security is going to be right at that 32, 35,000 dollar income. So that's not considered a living, uh, you know, if, if anybody's planning on living their life out, their retirement life out on Social Security, uh, they're pretty naive, I think. And, but, but just to give you an example of where this is, okay?
And point two, we're talking about nonprofit housing, we're not talking about government housing too. Any other questions or comments?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes. Go ahead.
I, I just want to thank you for coming again and presenting on this. I think I mentioned in our last council meeting that I'm a bit conflicted on this one because on one hand, these look like excellent properties and, you know, somewhere that I might want to live, you know, when I retire, they look amazing. Um, and I think that'd be a great thing for our community. The, the key thing that stands out for me is just, um, from our master plan's perspective, uh, it was something that's specifically called out is that in all three of our growth strategies, the acreage for institutional uses was held constant in the three scenarios because of the identified concerns with the amount of institutional property in Bel Air. And so to me, you know, we, we've already been blessed with some really amazing nonprofits here in the city of Bel Air and, um, I'm really glad that they're here and they add to our community in a lot of ways. But we also have to think about, you know, balanced growth over time. And I worry that supporting, you know, further institutional uses might put our city, you know, out of balance from an economic feasibility standpoint going forward. That's my chief concern. And I know that the increased rooftops will be good and they can potentially, you know, help drive some retail here, but we're also talking about converting a plot of land that could be used for retail or other commercial purposes into that, uh, institutional land. And so that, that plot of land specifically is somewhere that was zoned commercial where maybe retail would exist someday. And so that's where I've got a little bit of reluctance to, to support this. Not because I don't think that this is an awesome program, it's just from a balanced perspective and, uh, looking at our preferred growth strategies, that's, that's where I'm concerned.
That, that's one of the things, like I said, when I was going over my pros and cons list, that, plus the cons that it's been a non-taxpaying entity that, you know, we've got a lot of great roots here, but, you know, so that balance, this is a, definitely a, one of the decisions where, again, I want to echo and thank you again for, for coming back. I'm going to let you speak, don't worry. But just, again, to kind of reiterate the fact that I think that it was a prudent decision for us to table this at the last meeting to wait so we could have this conversation today before we move into this, so. Go ahead.
Just, just to embrace the bonds to the institutional, whatever category, I would, I would say again, as I tried to say earlier, I don't think we're, we're part of that category. We're part of the multifamily housing structure where you have all the deficiencies. Now, you may say that because we're exempt, we have to go into another category. But I, that's not what your community need is. And, and if you, if you say this is institutional, whatever, whatever, and therefore, uh, so be it. But, but whether it's us now and, and, or somebody else five years from now, uh, you're going to have this need. Meet with the folks at your senior center. Meet with the folks that are seniors in your community. They're wondering how to live another winter and worry about shoveling snow and how to mow the lawns in the summertime. Come in someday at a group and gathering and talk with them about that. What alternatives do they have? They'll also tell you that they're sitting there with a three-bedroom house that was built in 1968 or 1972 that will sell at a price range that will serve the working-class people that you need to live in this community. And when they buy it, they're going to fix that house up. They're going to put money into it, increase the tax base, increase your population, bring more population to town. That's happened in every one of the communities we've, we did development. 14 houses in Mulvane, uh, 16 in, um, Wamego. And we had 28 on the waiting list that said they were going to sell their houses to move into Derby, and I don't know how all that's going to work out. But the Chamber is thrilled with that because the people they want in town to work at the businesses in town can afford the new houses they're building in town. And from what I see is building, being built here, that's a situation here too. Those families, those working-class families that some of your businesses need aren't, aren't able to buy those $300,000, $400,000 homes. The other thing I need to say finally is this resolution tonight really doesn't matter. I, it matters only as an indication that you want to see this developed and will support the change of zoning and the issuance of bonds to be able to finance it like you did with the Zimmerman properties. That's, that's the bottom line. So if you're not going to do those other two things, vote this down, then we'll know. Because the other two things aren't on the agenda tonight, but we have, we have five weeks before we have to close on the property and have to have an indication that it can be financed that way and it can be rezoned. So if that's something that you know at the end of the day you're not going to support, acknowledge that and, and we'll, we'll not bother you anymore.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a comment.
Yes.
Um, again, I really appreciate you coming here tonight, Mr. Bishop, and believe me, you're, it's obvious you're very passionate with your work and, uh, you have provided us with a exhaustive list of, of all the, the residences and, um, housing developments that you've been involved with, that your company manages. And, um, so it's obvious you know what you're talking about. You know, you have the experience here. And it's, it's obvious that you, uh, value your own personal integrity and, and you're really personally involved in the way you take care of your residents and, uh, the, the passion you have for, for that, uh, service to them is obvious. So I want you to know that's not lost on us here.
Thank you.
So, um, I really do appreciate, uh, you sharing as much as you have. You certainly have shared more than you would, you'd need to, so thank you for that. Um, and I guess I just want to kind of speak to what, what I'm thinking in terms of where, where I stand on this, on this, this issue before us. Uh, there's so many good things here and, uh, the building is a development, it makes a lot of sense. It's handsome architecture, it's supporting a, a demographic that obviously we, we don't currently cater to outside of what the, uh, um, you know, the housing at the Catholic Diocese has, which obviously is a, a different situation, but, but similar in, in, in scope. And, uh, I guess, um, in terms of weighing, uh, both sides of this, um, there, there are so many positives here. And then when I look at the negatives, obviously we have the, the obvious nature of the, um, nonprofit nature, meaning there's going to be an exemption from property taxes. And, um, what I also think about is the location, um, that Rock and, or excuse me, Oliver and 53rd location. Like Mr. Mayor said, right now it's, it's just a bunch of fields. And, um, I know we would like to envision what that could be in 10 years, 20 years down the road in terms of the potential for commercial development. And, and I know that this, uh, as has been stated already tonight, that's, uh, we're not voting on the zoning change tonight, but that will be coming with this issue. So, um, however, I don't think speculation on what the future is going to be like, since we don't know, is a, swings enough weight for me tonight on, to land on, on going against this proposal. Based on everything that, that's here, not just tonight, but all the, all the information we have here, um, I know I'm, I'm favoring supporting this, this proposal.
Appreciate the comments.
Mr. Mayor, just a little follow-up comment, uh, and- Mr. Mayor, just a little follow-up comment, uh, and, and thank you for, for what you've said, uh, both Councilmember Smith and Elsah. Um, one of the old adages I think we all have heard, a bird in the hand is better than two in the bush, and, uh, I think this is a bird in the hand, okay? Uh, this is an opportunity for some development, and, uh, it's just a different way of, of putting your perspective there, Mr. Elsah, about, uh, we don't know what the future's going to bring, you know, we don't, uh, but I think this is a good fit for our master plan. It's not perfect, it, it does have the, the negatives that Councilmember Smith, Councilman Smith has brought out, and, uh, and that is true, but it, it also is true that it does support the multifamily needs, uh, for housing, uh, in, in this segment that isn't served adequately in the city, so I think that, for that reason, it's, it's a very good fit, so, um, anyway, that being said, that, uh, I'm, I'm very, uh, and much in favor of this, uh, this proposal, so, thank you.
Great conversation up here, and I'd just like to say, uh, in your last comment, anybody who ever wants to bring a housing development or a business process is not a bother to us. We would love to be up here to debate and discuss that, uh, with that, um, so, uh, thank you, and thank you for coming back. Um, and I think with that, I would like to entertain a motion on item A.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I motion to approve a resolution of support for a tax credit application to be filed with Kansas Housing Resources Corporation for the development of an affordable senior housing community by Homestead Affordable Housing, Inc., and authorize the mayor to sign.
Second?
First and second, are there any other questions or comments before I call for the vote? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Motion passes four to one. Nobody gives you time for closing within five weeks. All right. We're going to move on now to, um, item B, um, which is a consideration, this is a, uh, in agreement with the Tierra Web, um, we received a request from the owners, owners of the original, or the only building actually located in Tierra Verde, to approve the consent to lease and recognition of agreement. The city issued an IRB for construction of that building, and the owners are working on a lease-purchase agreement with a new tenant. They are also looking to refinance the property without terminating the outstanding bonds and keep the owners, ownership of the bonds the same, so that will not change. Under the terms of the current IRB lease to, uh, Tierra Web, the city will not have to consent to any part of the refinancing transaction, so that's a, a good thing there, um, but want to see if there's anything else that city attorney or city manager would like to add to that?
Uh, I will mention that, uh, I asked Sarah Steele, who is with Gilmore-Bellar Bond Council, and they were part of the issuance and such, to review that and ask if she had any concerns with the city signing it, and she had none whatsoever. Um, so, uh, basically, it's just because, uh, they, the, uh, Tierra Web folks had a IRB, anything that's done, city council has to approve it, and so, um, what could actually, what their goal is with this lease is it's actually a lease purchase, and so, the, because we know nothing's going on there now, and so this group is, is coming in to lease it, and they hope to purchase it, and then they would actually be a business that would operate out of there and own the facility, own the building.
And just, just, just to, uh, clarify earlier comments from, I believe you, uh, looked into this, this is a rehab facility for, uh, substance abuse, is that correct?
Yes, yes, um, and they'll do some modifications to the building, uh, I think they'll have two people per room, something like that, um, it, it, it will conform with the zoning, so there won't be any zoning requirements or changes or anything like that.
You want to talk about a, a need? All right.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I move to approve the consent to lease and recognition agreement with Tierra Web Properties LLC and Summit BHC, which taught LLC and authorize the mayor to sign.
Second.
At first and second, any questions or comments? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Same sign. All right, final item this evening, uh, developer's agreement, uh, for the villas at Prestwick. Uh, the city enters into development agreements with all new developments. These agreements spell out in writing the responsibilities of each party during construction and thereafter. The agreement is filled with the plat for future reference. Um, in this case, staff and developer have agreed upon the language contained in this agreement, and it is now, uh, before us this evening for final approval by the city council.
Mr. Mayor, I got a question on this agreement, uh, that maybe, uh, current city attorney, uh, Ms. Kelly, could answer. Uh, on page eight, it talks about a bonding capacity, um, and under the conditions of the bond, what are the conditions that bond is released? And so, my question on, on this, this, to me, reads like, uh, the, the bond release is at, at the developer's discretion, and I, I didn't know that that would be appropriate to have that, uh, type of, type of, uh, release of bond.
You're talking about the terms of the, of the percentage of bond? I'm sorry, can you say?
The, the bonding capacity clause, okay?
Mm-hmm.
And it, it says in there that the, um, the developer, um, can release the bonds, and, and it doesn't actually say at their discretion, but it reads like it's at their discretion, and I just wanted to understand what conditions, uh, the developer could release the bonds.
Okay.
I do know in our, um, in our economic development policy, when we talk about bonds, uh, for infrastructure, which is what this paragraph's talking about, we don't release those until at least, um, thirty-five percent of the, uh, houses are certificates of, of occupancies are issued, so we won't allow, we won't, um, exempt that until that, that amount is fulfilled.
And we get, and it, as I've had time to kind of go back through it, it's been a couple of weeks since I looked at this closely, but, um, that thirty-five percent of the, the developer can request the release of those bonds if and only if thirty-five percent of the properties are in, are built, and the city, um, is also entitled to a partial drawing against that, um, against the credit amount.
So, how long would the partial drawing be? How long would the partial drawing, uh, be?
From what I, from what I'm reading it to be now, and I, we can, I can get back to you after more careful review, um, that I just can't do right here, right now, it would be up to the thirty-five percent.
Well, and, and so, let me, let me get, for what I'm, my concern is, I, I know that we've had properties that, um, did not have the bonding requirement on the, uh, on the, for the specials, and, and then they default on the specials, and now the city's holding the bag on those specials. If, if the developer can release the bonds, uh, long before the specials are paid off, we could end up with that same situation again, because really, we just, we just let them have, let them have a, a way out of the, of the contract. Now, if I'm misreading that, that's fine, just, just let me, let me know what that really says.
And I'll, I'll tie away in, but this is a little bit different, um, this one, by even asking for a letter of credit, there's a lot that goes into preparing that and qualifying for that, so that assures us here, and in some of those other cases, the letter of credit may have been on other terms. This is a traditional letter of credit, so that right there adds a lot of assurances, and there are limits on how that bond, um, yet, the thirty-five percent of infrastructure has to be there, and the city can draw against that, um, and I believe it's up to the thirty-five percent, I'm not sure, though, but at least the city would get a percentage of it back, in this case, it would be much different than a case you may be thinking of where there may have been softer terms, so.
And, and I'll give you an example of where they could ask for a, a certain release amount, um, a lot of developments, uh, they'll, they'll put in maybe thirty lots to be constructed on, um, and so you can easily do sewer, water, and streets to those thirty lots, but if you've got a, a hundred lot subdivision, you put in phase one of thirty, you may actually have to do forty acres of that for drainage. So, what we would do is, so they would get, um, twenty or fifteen houses, you know, constructed, so they would request to release that letter of credit for maybe streets, water, and sewer, but that, uh, the bigger, um, stormwater is actually relying on fifty lots, so we would say, well, we're not going to release that portion because there's actually fifty lots. You've, you've, um, you've done fifteen, so we may allow a partial release on some of that, but we'll keep the rest of it until it's all developed, so that's where they could ask for a partial refund of their letter of credit and something like that.
So, if, if, the, this, it is not their discretion to get, to release, they have to make application for the release?
There has, yeah, it has to conform to set a lot of terms.
And then our economic development policy, it actually states in there that we won't release anything until thirty-five percent of the lots have certificate of occupancies issued, which means a house on.
Right, right.
So. Yep.
Okay. Well, I, I just wanted to make sure that we didn't have something we looked past.
Sure.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions or comments on item C?
I just had, Mr. Mayor, I just had one small thing on, uh, on page eight under miscellaneous. The, uh, sentence reads, "The developer must make mail delivery provisions for each household." Should that, should that, would it actually be provisions, not provisions?
Yeah.
Right. Yeah.
Okay.
Before the, the signature.
Just a minor typo.
Mr. Mayor, just a question for the city attorney, do you have any other concerns with this agreement?
No, um, it's pretty, um, it, it's pretty tailored for this situation, but it also has all the typical protections like bonding capacity that we've picked up and learned over time. We've kind of built up a, a, a list of, of assurances that we build into all the agreements, so that's really nice, but it's also tailored enough to work with the developers, in this case, so no, I don't.
Okay.
Any other questions? If not, I would, if council is comfortable, I would entertain a motion to approve the developer's agreement.
Mr. Mayor, I motion that we approve an agreement concerning the development of the villas at Prestwick, in addition to Bel Air, Sedgwick County, Kansas, and authorize the mayor to sign.
Second?
First and second, any questions or comments? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Same sign. Next, discussion of future issues, we have a workshop scheduled for a week from today. I'm actually going to be out of town that day and would really like to be here for this workshop, because I think I'd ask some kind of like at city hall updating and some marketing ideas, um, currently working on, and I'll see to it that you guys get my notes ahead of time on that, but, uh, is everybody comfortable or willing and able, if we were to move it up a day to Monday, the tenth?
It's fine with me.
I think it would work.
That was the first meeting, Monday night football, though, you realize that, right?
Get your priorities.
Sorry.
When they stand for the national anthem, I'll watch it again, but anyway.
There you go.
But, uh, Monday, the, the tenth would work for everybody?
It would work for me.
Yep.
We'll have a small TV for football for Councilmember Hahn, who's playing Monday night?
I don't know.
Oh, God!
But it's pro football.
It's football, so, yeah, no.
That's pretty bad.
So, we'll go ahead and move, we'll move the workshop to Monday, uh, do you guys want to do it at six o'clock or six-thirty?
Six-thirty, give them time to get home.
Six-thirty, all right, appreciate that, everybody. Um, next item, like I said at the beginning of the meeting, would ask that we have an executive session, I know, for about twenty minutes, um, for the purposes of discussing the city's acquisition of property pursuant to KSA seventy-five dash forty-three nineteen, exception for preliminary discussions relating to the acquisition of real property, and in this executive session motion, I would, uh, ask that you guys make to also include invitation for the city manager and the city attorney.
So moved.
Second.
First and second, attorney's looking at me, was that okay?
Yes.
That's a picture!
I'm sure when you read the final motion, Mr. Mayor, you'll include where the meeting will resume and the time.
Yes, yes, and so, go into executive session for twenty minutes and open the meeting in, at eight twenty-five. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Same sign, we are in executive session, it's only twenty-five.